...Rattner Planning Commission's August 5, 2019 meeting. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on the agenda is the minutes of the July 1, 2019 meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, amendments to the July 1, 2019 minutes? If there are no changes or alterations or amendments, do I hear a motion?
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the, so the...
Dave Fiorello from Momoney, on behalf of the applicant. Both properties here at 733 and 741 Harrison Road are owned by the Wentz family, Mr. and Mrs. Wentz. The proposal here is to shift a portion of land from the larger 733 property and give that to the adjacent 741 property. The 741 property is just shy of one acre. The 733 acre property is 2.75 acres. So, the intent is to transfer roughly a quarter of an acre from 733 to 741. We have plans here that shows the improvements outlined on both lots. And we're in receipt of the township comment letters if anybody wants to go over them.
Letter zoning on Mr. Phillips, Roger Phillips' letter.
John, excuse me. Do you want to put those letters in the record? No?
These are letters from the engineers. You should have them...
Okay. I thought you said neighbors. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I meant engineer if I said that. I'm sorry.
So, there are certain things shown on here where you're asking for waivers under subdivision land development. Are you still asking for a waiver on number 1, 255-22B, the 500 feet showing man-made features, et cetera?
We would like to request that as a waiver, yes. I mean, at this point here, it's a property line swap. There's really no development at this time. There is, let me correct myself, at 741 Harrison Road, the applicants have submitted an application for a building, or a grading permit, which I believe has been approved. Other than that, the intent is to, just to swap some land here.
Does the staff have any feeling about granting the waiver on item number 1?
On all the waivers that are indicated in my letter, I have no objection since there's no improvements being done to these lots at this time.
I agree.
So, if they were to do something to the lots, then something like the government, there's some reference here to the maps being out of date or a server, they would all have to be brought up to date or changed.
The zoning map, or the map that we've used on our location map is from the township zoning map. If there is an updated map, it wasn't available on the township website. So, Roger, do you know if there's an updated map that's available?
I'll check and get you something.
Okay. I mean, other than that, I could probably erase the line that's referenced there. This property at 733 Harrison Road used to be two lots. It was consolidated into one lot back in 2015. At this point, I have a plan of that property. This was the subdivision plan that was, or lot-line merging plan, or lot consolidation plan that was submitted at that time. So, there's, it's a matter of a line on a map. I think we can fix one way or another.
Any other questions from the members?
If I may, one of Roger's comments was with regard to restrictions of subdivision referenced in the title report. That section, Roger, is in the title report, and that makes reference to this lot consolidation plan from 2015, referencing the point that no additional buildings could be built, or principal uses could be built on that lot as a result of law consolidation.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move we recommend the approval of the subdivision with any corrections necessary or due by staff.
Anybody care to second the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appears that it's passed. Thank you very much.
It'd probably be good for the minutes if you did a vote on the three waivers that were requested. And that's regarding significant feature contour lines and showing trees larger than six inches on the plan. Is that correct, Roger?
You want me to make an amendment to what, to my, okay. I think we should amend it to that the waivers be granted for 1, 2, and 3, which is 255-22B-1LK and 255-22B-1P and 255-22B-1R. Be added to the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It is approved. Next on the agenda is Ardrossen Farms Lot Consolidation/Subdivision. John?
Mr. Chairman. John, I'm accusing myself for this.
Yes, thank you. We're here getting really close to where we had hoped we would be in 2014, 2015, when we had the vision of having a lot of open space throughout the plan as a result of being able to have investment parcels that were not restricted and then owned by like-minded individuals that saw them gifted to NALT and so forth. So, we're well down the road on that plan. And two years ago, we had, or a year and a half ago, we had the nice situation of a lot of gifts to NALT to allow NALT to buy 10 of the lots that would have been development lots. And so, they've all been restricted. And so, now we're trying to get rid of all of the ancillary lines, property lines, that run through parcels that are contiguous to each other that are owned by NALT. And that's the basic purpose of this plan. It creates situations where we end up with taxable parcels that are, that are now taxable that have been bought by NALT and deed restricted. So, they then get merged all in with open space areas and so forth. There's no change to any open space area in the plan. Those lines all stay the same. They are parcels that are now or will shortly be owned by NALT, will be owned by NALT before this consolidation plan is recorded. And I've put on the table here the plan that is in the upper-left corner of your second sheet, because that's the easiest way to understand what's going on. And what we're really talking about on this plan is the yellow, the green, and the blue There are nine blue parcels on this plan that are lots that have been purchased by NALT.
John, for the board's benefit, can you tell them who NALT is?
Oh, North American Land Trust. It's the land trust that has accepted gifting of most of the open areas within this development for its preservation. The green areas are open space areas on the plan that are either now or will in the next month or so be owned by NALT. And then, the yellow areas, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of them on the plan, are investment parcels that the owners of those investment parcels gifted to NALT. And so, NALT now owns them as well. So, if you look at all the green, yellow, and blue parcels, we're trying to consolidate them into as few lots as possible, few parcels as possible, so that we don't have a lot of property lines running within property that both sides of it are owned by North American Land Trust. That's why if you look at the first sheet and see the coloring on the first sheet, for example, the only thing we can't do is we can't cross street lines. So, you'll see this center here is one big area that's going to be a NALT lot. This area all down around here is going to be another lot. This area here is now combined with, with three NRA parcels. And now, since the plan was filed, we've determined that this additional adjacent open space area can be added to it. So, the revised plans that you got at the end of last week that were handed out to you today add that parcel into the consolidated lot there. So, that's the basic purpose of this. There are three other things that are being done here as a result. One is, down in the bottom here, if you see there's a faint red line right through here, there was an NRA 7 and an NRA 24. To facilitate the gifting by the developer of this larger area here to North American Land Trust this year, we wanted to make that part of the NRA bigger and the other part smaller. Because unlike investment partnerships, the applicant doesn't get to step up a basis to a then fair market. It's its basis in the ground, so the more ground it can gift, the better the result for the developer. So, it wants to gain, it wants to, in essence, gift more ground now instead of less ground. So, again, that's a benefit to NALT, a benefit to the community. But all we're doing is redrawing the line between those two NRA parcels. Over here, be, well, I'll come to that, these two right now. When we did this Phase 4 lot-line revision a year and a half ago, this road, Ardrossen, used to come around down to here, and there was another road that came down and joined it. Instead, we noticed that if at the end, we got to basically where we are now, you didn't need this road around the back because everything that was owned by NALT was adjacent then to other property owned by NALT and didn't need frontage, certainly wouldn't need road access because it would never be developed. It was restricted. So, a temporary cul-de-sac was placed here. And the improvement escrow was made in two parts. One, what was built for these lots, and the other, an escrow here in case we never got to this point. But now, we are. The only difference is that this parcel right here, which we thought might be owned by NALT by now, is not. And because it's not, this parcel, which is labeled 417, if we stopped at the present cul-de-sac, wouldn't have frontage. So, all we've had to do is extend the cul-de-sac to that lot. And so, that's the only improvement change in this plan, although the escrows already account for building that road. It will just change what gets used now instead of what gets returned when the road that runs around the outside here is then no longer to be, to be constructed. So, you'll notice this lot and this piece here both have frontage on Darby-Paoli Road. There's a long-recorded driveway easement for that lot, which is already being used and that house is being built. Because this lot, 4-8, would have to have access on the cul-de-sac, the lot consolidation agreement, signed by everybody in Phase 4 here, including all these property owners, says that the abandoned part of this road from the cul-de-sac up to Lot 4-8 will be deeded by the owners on both sides to 4-8 to create a 50-foot-wide panhandle for 4-8. And that's all covered by that lot consolidation agreement. So, that way, the remaining parcels that are not being consolidated will all have road frontage. And as we said, that was the way it was set up, only 250 feet of road shorter back when we did the lot consolidation plan for Phase 4. So, that's one of the places where you'll see red lots that will remain as lots. One will be owned by NALT, the other is owned by the Brennans. And so, the subdivision there is the transfer of ground from 4-7 and 4-17 to create the panhandle for the Brennans. Over on the other side, where you have NRA 18 and 4-1, because this road will not extend anymore, we needed a panhandle out from NRA 18 to the road. The half of the road that is in 4-1 becomes that panhandle. So, none of the, none of the usable part of 4-1 changes. It's the portion, and you can see it better in the short plans that you have instead of this, because this doesn't show that line. This is just a current situation map to show you what parcels are being affected. So, if you look on the cover sheet or any of the other sheets of what you receive, you'll see the little panhandle of NRA 18 coming down to the intersection there at Ardrossen Drive. Here's the, here's where you can see what I mean if you look at your first sheet on the revised lot consolidation plan. Okay? So, when we call it a subdivision plan, that's part of the subdivision, this is part of the subdivision, and the reordering of the lines of, between NRA 24 and NRA 7. This is no longer being divided into two lots. And when you go over to NRA 1, which was on your original plan as becoming lots 1-17 and 18, they are now staying as NRA 1. So, there are no new lots being created. There's no open space being affected in any way whatsoever. And it's just a matter of redrawing the lines in those three places. One, to make a bigger NRA 7. Two, to create a panhandle for NRA 18. And three, to take some of the road right-of-way portion that was part of 4-17 and 4-7 and make them the panhandle of 4-8. Those are the three subdivision factors. Because the road is being extended an extra 250 feet, we need a waiver. As Roger brought out, we were given a waiver for the temporary cul-de-sac to take it where we, where we have it. We'd build it there if NRA 25 was owned by NALT, but it's not. So, we have to take it another 250 feet. So, we need a waiver to extend that cul-de-sac to that point. I know that's really complicated, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Quick question. I know you mentioned it earlier on. What does NRA stand for again?
NRA. Because of the issue in this township at another place where the question of what do you call a piece of property that's not getting approved for development? Do you, do you call it open? Do you call it open space? We coined the initials NRA, meaning not residentially approved.
So, the NRA lots, they will eventually all be NALT lots?
Well, like, no, I can't promise that because they are properties that are developable but are not approved for development. So far, in every instance, we found people to invest in them and then gift them. And that's what we look for. But because the gifting has to have value, we can't tell you and we can't promise that A) they'll be gifted or B) they won't be developed. That's one of the trust factors of, of properties like this or properties with conservation easements or whatever. You know, the value has to be preserved. And so, it has been, but in every instance, it's gone like we told you we thought it would. And we expect it the same way.
So, why isn't NALT purchasing these lots?
Because NALT has to have money to purchase those lots.
Okay.
And NALT purchased the 10 lots you saw before because four different people made substantial contributions to NALT so that NALT could sign agreements and buy them.
And is there a theoretical chance that someone could come in here in the future and try to develop some of these NRA lots?
If I didn't tell you yes, I would be in trouble. Because that is exactly what I have to preserve, the right that that could happen. So, we told you that that's what could happen. We told you our vision was to find people that would like to invest in them and see them preserved. And that's what's happened every time up until now, just like we thought it would.
Are the donations, quote, "coming from people who have homes that are under construction," so to speak?
The contributions to NALT and the gifts to NALT have all, but in one instance, come from people that are moving, you know, building somewhere within Ardrossen.
So, basically, NALT is the conversion factor that changes buying the ground to have open space next to your house to a charitable event? Because NALT is a 501(c)(3), I guess?
Well, actually, actually, people don't invest, in general, people don't invest in park, in properties next to their house just for the problem that might occur as to, even though there are cases that say it wouldn't, wouldn't be, that, wouldn't happen under the tax law. But if I was, if I was giving NALT money to buy something next to my property, I'd be worried that there would be an enhancement factor. So, no, they buy elsewhere. They invest in portions of the property away from their house.
Going back to the cul-de-sac, at 2,300 feet, is there any involvement or requirement that the fire marshal look at that?
I don't know. We, I mean, when you look at it, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, potentially 8, hopefully 6 houses on that cul-de-sac. It's very rural cul-de-sac. I don't remember when we took it to, if it's 2,300 that it's going to be now, it would have been 20,050 or 60 before, because I think we're extending it 240 feet when that waiver was granted for it as a temporary cul-de-sac. It takes it back, I mean, the cul-de-sac, if you look at, back at the front door of the main house, that's where it, there is a double access.
I guess I just brought it up because it's on here as, and of course, you just mentioned you need a waiver. And I'm looking at the staff to understand whether or not there's any, any concerns that would prevent us from granting the waiver.
They were already granted a waiver under the original approval to install the, what was the temporary cul-de-sac. The reason that they have to come back for a waiver is because they're extending that. So, they're making that condition, they're exceeding that previous approval from the waiver. So, I don't think anything would, would have changed from the last time that that waiver was granted, other than it's extended 250 feet like Mr. Snyder explained.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have something to add, if I could. Mr. Snyder, if you could center the plan on NALT Lot 4, upper-right corner of the plan, so to speak. Okay? So, NALT Lot 4, on the far northern side, runs adjacent to Old Newtown Road, which is a private drive. We have been in discussion with Mr. Scott, Mr. Snyder, and their tree contractor regarding tree maintenance of that stretch that basically runs on the right-hand side of the plan. So, I would request that tree maintenance be part of the record so it could be enforceable, even if it is deeded to NALT. The township still needs the ability to protect its residents on both sides of that, whether they be our residents in Ardrossen or residents of Old Newtown Road.
That could be accomplished in a couple of ways. One would be some kind of declaration when you are able to ascertain what the maintenance responsibilities are. It can be a declaration that's filed separately, or it can be a note on the plan. That's...
I do have a problem with that because what we've, what we've done before, what we're doing now, is we're doing it in response to the already existing requirements of your shade tree ordinance, which permits the township to require maintenance of anything that is dead or dangerous. And one of the things that's happened out there is your arborist has gone through and flagged somewhere in the 20s, at one point it was 28, but I think some of them ended up being pruned instead of removed, trees. And they're being removed. And you have the authority under your shade tree ordinance to require that. So, to create something beyond that makes it sound like this would be something that goes beyond that already existing ordinance. And I don't know why that would occur.
Does NALT have a local presence? Would the township be able to contact NALT as the property owner? Do we go through the homeowners association? These are the concerns we have.
The homeowners, under the, under the homeowners association declaration, the homeowners association, not NALT, is responsible for the maintenance of that property.
Of all the NALTs, Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
So, NALT is the owner, the HOA will be responsible for the maintenance, and that's who we would go to?
That's correct.
Should there be issues with that property?
That's correct. And that's in the already-recorded declaration. And the homeowners association is responsible for the maintenance, the taxes, and all insurance on all of the properties owned by NALT and all of the open space properties.
My recommendations of the planning commission would be to, if you're inclined to grant approval of this plan, which seems like the way to go, to include a condition that the issue of the tree maintenance and the township's ability to enforce tree maintenance be resolved prior to going to the Board of Commissioners. So that we don't work it out at the meeting, that it doesn't sound like it's going to be difficult to resolve. And it's a matter of, I, I'm not sitting here looking at the Declaration of Covenants, so I can't tell you, oh, yes, Mr. Snyder's right, although I'm sure you are. I just think it would be advisable... I just think it would be advisable to leave that open to make sure that it's resolved properly before the board approves the plan.
And just so you know, Mary, I have no problem putting on the plan a note that references the declaration and states that the homeowners' association is responsible for maintenance, including the responsibility for compliance with the requirements of the shade tree ordinance.
Oh, I think that would be a great solution. What do you think, Steve?
I concur with the solicitor. That'd be fine.
Okay.
With regard to the open space, how will it be maintained?
There's an open space management plan that was approved at the very start, and it's part of the recorded declaration. It's basically to be preserved naturally, three to four cuttings a year, agricultural uses are permitted, no buildings.
Will you still have some of the cow, the cattle grazing on some of this stuff?
That's what's the intent now. Of course, that could change. The homeowners' association could decide that it wants it all natural and not agriculturally used, but right now, we believe that they are going more the other way, that they want to be sure they preserve the agricultural uses out there. But eventually, that's a homeowners' association choice as to whether they do that as a part of the open space management plan.
Last question I have is how, what is the accessibility for the lots 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.2, 5.1, as well as, what was it, 4.10, 4.13?
You see a little stub of roadway coming in-
Off of Darby Paoli?
Off of Darby Paoli Road.
Okay.
The subdivision plan itself has a little cul-de-sac that comes in and serves those parcels. 5-1 has a driveway off of Darby Paoli Road, but also has an access easement off of the cul-de-sac at the end of Piling.
Okay.
So that it can get in that way. 4-9 and 4-10 are existing lots with existing buildings, and they have their own driveways off of Darby Paoli Road.
Well, that's the existing farm, right?
There's-
The existing farm?
There's one that has two little buildings and a, right now presently unoccupied house on it. And there's another one, 4-9 has a house that if you come down Sawmill Road to Darby Paoli Road, it's right there, just past you on the left.
Okay.
Across the street when you come down to that intersection.
I take it that, again, referring to Roger's letter, July 30th, 2019-
Yes.
-under general, they're all, will comply? One, two, three, four?
Dave? I'll let Dave Fiorella.
Number one is new deeds, which is a will comply. Proposed sanitary sewer extension, I believe that's a moot point before, as the previous plans, as John mentioned, showed two proposed lots for NRA 1. We had showed a sewer extension coming off the existing line to serve that lot. That would be no longer required, so there's no, they will come off the plans and we won't, that won't have to be addressed. Driveway easement providing access to 413, request a note relative to the responsibility of maintenance of those, which we will address. And the other sanitary sewer profile on sheet 1112 is, I think, a typo, so that's a will comply.
Thank you.
And if you look up at the page before with Roger, two of the three comments there related to subdivisions that are now no longer happening. There's no lots 117 and 118, and there's not a lot 3-1 and 312.
Well, there is a comment with regarding labeling of setback lines. We have the setback lines shown, but they're not labeled, and we will certainly label them.
Any other questions from?
Any other questions from the board? Appears that public comment is, there isn't any public comment, it appears. Would anyone like to take a crack at a motion?
Would you like me to give it a shot?
Please, I was hoping you'd say that.
I'm guessing that you would like to approve it, including the grant of a waiver from Section 255, 27D1, to allow the extension of the cul-de-sac, conditioned on compliance with the Gannett Fleming Letter of July 30th, specifically Items 1, 3, and 4, as 2 is not applicable, and further conditioned upon, including on the plan, a note that the HOA is responsible for maintenance of the properties, including NALT lots, and including maintenance of trees.
Do I hear a second?
No, I'll second.
And I would hope that maintenance of trees is consistent with the shade tree ordinance.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, thank you very much. I know that was complicated. I appreciate your handling so easily.
Okay, the third item on the agenda is a discussion of the proposed lighting and noise ordinances.
Mr. Murphy, Steve, can you give us some background as to how this came about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So as noted in the memo, the planning commission reviewed a proposed lighting ordinance a few months back, based on what the solicitor had provided, with direction from the board of commissioners. For lack of a better term, that lighting ordinance does not fare well in front of this planning commission. There was a lot of items that were noted in there that would not necessarily work in Radnor Township. Mr. Golis, one of your members, did a great job. He actually had a synopsis of a lot of the issues, and he also provided some sample ordinances, which are included in this packet. Solicitor Rice also included some sample ordinances. So the reason we're back here in front of the planning commission again is, the board of commissioners has asked the planning commission, with help from the solicitor and staff, to come up with a noise ordinance and a lighting ordinance that can be brought back to the board of commissioners. Understanding that's a considerable amount of work, and Mr. Golis did do a considerable amount of work in his own right, my recommendation to the planning commission would be, A) number one, I would like to go back to the board at one point and be able to say, hey, we have a schedule for when a draft ordinance will be put before you for one of them. I also suggest that you create a subcommittee or two subcommittees, one either for each ordinance or one for both. And that subcommittee can work outside of this meeting, which is only once a month. They can meet at hours at work for all. Solicitor Everly and myself would also be on that subcommittee to provide the legal input you need and the staff input you need, and actually, you know, drafting that ordinance for you. So my hope would be that if we started with the lighting ordinance, which would be my recommendation, that a subcommittee is chosen. Once the subcommittee is chosen, they can determine where and when they will meet. Hopefully, by maybe November or December, we would be back to the board of commissioners with a draft ordinance, which would mean, early November, the subcommittee would be presenting to the full, the board of the whole.
What would happen if we thought what we have now is adequate?
Then that would be the presentation.
That's the recommendation.
I think, like, I would follow Charlie's point up with, this is what I'm concerned about. When we, when we talked about this last time here at the planning commission, we basically asked the question, why is the board of commissioners pushing this lighting ordinance issue on us because we have a lighting ordinance in the code, it's just not in one place? And we never got an answer, because we surmised at that meeting, and Charlie and I both said this, said it seemed like Villanova Lights were pushing, were pushing the agenda. The Villanova Light situation was really why one board of commissioner, one member of the board of commissioners was concerned about redoing the lighting ordinance, which John took something off the shelf, as you know, and it didn't really work for Radnor. And the reason we have the lighting ordinance all through the code is because it's very specific to different areas of Radnor and different situations in Radnor. So the board of commissioners has never, not one of those people has said to me, this is why we need you guys to redo this. Now, being a modern person, I understand that science changes, that, you know, we go to LED lights instead of incandescent lights, and there's all sorts of things that happen in Radnor because of lighting that we see and we wonder about. The train station at Wayne, Septa, put LED lights in there, and they put, according to the wattage of the incandescent plan, they put LED lights, which are much too bright for that station. We see this, we understand, there are issues. Like, there's not, there's, you can make an argument that every township in America should look again at their codes and comprehensive plans, and if they're not modern, make them more modern. But I have a problem with this, because it feels like small things are driving a large undertaking. So if it's just Villanova Lights, that's not a good enough reason for me. I want one of the board of commissioners, or all the board of commissioners, to tell me that's not the reason they want us to take this on. The noise is all about blowers. That came before us already. That was almost as poor a presentation as this lighting thing. I mean, it was like, it didn't make sense. It's, I, do I, do blowers wake me up sometimes? I mean, do I hear noises in Radnor that I think maybe are inappropriate? Yes. But this is not, this is not what we should be doing here. We shouldn't, we need to take, if we're going to look at this, it has to be comprehensive, well-thought-out, like, and, you know, just putting a November date on, it's August, and putting a November date on, like, we're going to have something ready? Like, with the science out there, with what we really have to do, I mean, I, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me, Steve, I really-
Mr. Golis, that was an arbitrary date, so I guess I might, I can't speak to the concerns you had with the ordinance. So my thought is, the planning commission has a few options. Pen a memo that says, we're fine with the lighting ordinance as it stands, we'll send that off to the VOC. Take a look at that lighting ordinance, where it sits, as it sits today, and make those modern tweaks that Mr. Golis spoke about. I think that might be advisable, noting today's technology and some of the, looking at some of the other ordinances. So there's option two. Option, the other item is, that was an arbitrary item by me, by all means, the planning commission should set the schedule for how they're going to move forward with the subcommittee and a committee of the whole. So whatever you feel on that. The noise ordinance, I offer the same. Pen a memo that says, we're fine with the noise ordinance, or take it as it stands, make tweaks to it, or lastly, look at it in its entirety, in a holistic way, and say, okay, here's a draft that is very different than what you have now. I think the palette, your palette is wide open, any color you wish, any method you wish. So I'm bringing forth to the planning commission what the board asked us to do. So however you wish to do it is fine. I leave that up to you folks.
It seems to me that, given the fact that we've learned, largely through Matt's work and also speaking to his staff, that the present, to the extent that we presently have a lighting ordinance, the, it's woven throughout our code. So I think the more rational and reasonable thing to do, and the more efficient thing to do, before we unintentionally or intentionally throw the baby out with the dishwater, because we'd have to go back through the code and extract all of that, that lighting information, all that's already there, if we create a freestanding lighting ordinance. That's how I see it. And I think that as a first step, and maybe the last step, is to go through our ordinance, look and see what it says presently regarding lighting, see where it can be changed, improved, try and anticipate where future needs will occur, and do it that way. And we can do that as a group, or we can do it via committee. My concern with committee would be, do we have to, do we have to have public meetings with every subcommittee meeting? Do we have to, do we have to take public comment with every, with every meeting, every subcommittee meeting? Because if we do, we probably should just all sit together and do it.
The township has always taken the position that it wants subcommittee meetings advertised. Public comment could be limited to a very small section at the end or the beginning of the meeting. But yes, I think the commission wants you to advertise subcommittee meetings.
I think, I think, to get back to what Matt said, I think that anything that we would do, or any commission would do to come up with an ordinance, really, really is based on the technology of lighting and sound at that specific time in a calendar or a year. I think if anything, as far as our ordinance goes, I don't know if I would change our ordinance at all, other than a chart that would depict any given situation where current lighting standards exist, like gas stations, or houses, or football fields, or baseball fields, that people who know and design the lighting for these places go to the chart, so that when somebody wants to do something, you go to the chart, whether it be in 2018 or 27, 2027, that chart is a living chart. It changes as technology changes. And that's kind of put in the zoning ordinance, so that it's always gone. In other words, it's always there. If you're going to do gas stations, if you're going to remodel your gas station, you're going to put new lights in a football field or a baseball stadium, you go to the current chart, see what the current standards are, and that's what comes into play. That's the way I would approach it, I think.
I kind of have a, sorry, Megan, you want to go ahead? Sure. Go ahead. I, I kind of think that the focus is a little too broad. The lighting ordinance as it stands in what we have, I think it isn't the problem. I think the problem is we don't have an ordinance for light trespass on adjacent properties. And so is there a way that we could think about developing a new part to the ordinance that actually deals with the light trespass problem, which is the essence of the Villanova issue, issues in other part of the townships? It's not about the, the current fixture. It's about the fact that the light is escaping from where it was intended to be. And so there is technology that exists that we could create an enforceable situation on light trespass, and it would apply to whether we decide it just applies to commercial properties or commercial adjacent to residential properties. That would be a part of what we'd have to decide. But I think that that's the, that's the focus that I heard through the broad lighting ordinance conversation.
I think that's kind of what I'm saying with the chart, and that changes. That light trespass will change with each different operation and how lights are improved. So that that chart says that the light trespass of bulb X is five feet on each side, and five years from now, that's no longer acceptable, and that, and that chart then varies and says, now it's three feet, is what's needed. And I think you need a living chart, something that's going to vary in the ordinance from year to year, or whenever the new, the new technology comes into play. But I agree with you, it's really a light trespass. That's really what everybody's worried about, and that's what fixtures come. That's why, and different light trespass for different operations. You know, in a parking lot, you may want more on internal lights than you have on the external lights. And that's covered by the charts, I think.
If I could add, so we do, we do limit that in the current ordinance, what can, zero foot candles over the property line. zero foot candles over the property line, so you have that, that barrier. But, what, Mr. Falcone, what you're talking about, the fixtures, is, we do have specific items in the ordinance about the fixtures. You can't see the glare, you can't see the fixture, which are supposed to help people who, as they are approaching or driving by, don't see that. So, maybe those, that living, breathing document that I think you're both talking about, is something that the planning commission could provide input for, as it moves to the future, and with the use of LEDs, or, not so much stating, "This is what you must use, but this is the end result."
Could we mandate an annual review? I mean, you have to have some mechanism to update that chart. You can't just say, "Take a look in a book that's not part of our ordinance," right? Or, a website, you can't, I'm asking Mary, I guess, at the same time, a living chart can't be just...
Well, the, the living chart would be in a zoning ordinance, not a subdivision and land development.
How does that get updated, so it's still alive year to year, so to speak?
It can be updated by an ordinance.
Just say, "The zoning officer, every January needs to update the chart," or whatever, once a year.
I think that's a little trickier. I think, I think there actually has to be an ordinance action to amend an appendix. What you're talking about is appendixes and the appendices in the, in the zoning ordinance to address specific situations in all districts, and I think that makes sense, and by making them appendices, you're putting yourself in a position where it'll be much easier to amend. And, let me answer the first question you asked. As a zoning ordinance provision, there has to be continual and constant compliance. When we're talking about a subdivision and land development ordinance provision, we only get to review them when they're in front of us. So, I don't think you have, like, I don't think you have to worry about the constant review of actually people's properties, just a constant review of the ordinances, if that makes sense.
How would you, assuming this chart changes over time, with the advent of technol, or the improvement of tech, technology, how would you enforce it? So, for example, if I build a building right now, and I got a parking lot of X size, and I am spending the money for the most updated lighting technology to limit the lighting pollution onto my neighbor's properties, five years from now, the technology changes, will I be required to basically change everything in order to be compliant with the new, with the new ordinances?
That's one of the things, one of the issues you're gonna have to confront when you look at the lighting ordinance. There is not, you can have non-conforming uses, and you can have non-conforming structures, but the law doesn't specifically mandate that we provide non-conforming lighting, or non-conforming dust odor, and those kind of standards. So, the, to, the extent to which people are going to be made to comply when the ordinances are amended, isn't just a question for the committee as it drafts this ordinance, it'll be a question for everyone going forward as the ordinances are amended. Now, to what extent do we want this to apply retroactively? To what extent are we only requiring that this apply to new construction? Those are questions that you will want to answer every time you amend the appendices.
You know, the discussion that we've been having for the last few minutes, I think, mirrors the discussions that we would be having if we were sitting dedicated, have a dedicated meeting, or meetings, to hash out what we want to do with the ordinance, what we want to do with the existing ordinance, and how we can modify it, make it better, without necessarily writing an entire new ordinance. And I think that's something that we should talk about. I mean, this whole idea about, this whole notion, or issue, I should say, regarding light trespass, seems to be at the heart of this. Coupled with it is, of course, changes in technology, how do we integrate those? How do we, what mechanism can we evolve to keep, if necessary, to keep our ordinance up to date as far as light and light pollution is concerned? I mean, they're all things that we can talk about, we're not gonna resolve it right here and now, but we, I think it sort of sets the tone, that we don't want to create, and I'm getting the sense from this discussion, that we don't, I don't believe we need to have a vote on any of this, that creating an entire new ordinance is not what we want to do. I think we want to go back and look at the ordinance that we've got, and see how we can make it better in this area of light. As far as the noise pollution is concerned, I think that's a pretty tough nut to crack, and I think we ought to take light first, and then work on the, the noise thing at some indeterminate time in the future.
John, just to make a recommendation, maybe, maybe, over the next one or two, or three commissions' meetings that we have, that we allocate 15 minutes at the end to discuss this. That way, we're all involved, and we, you know, we're really not all putting hours into this, but we're getting everybody's ideas. We'll put a time in a 15 or 20 minutes or less at the end of each meeting, under new business, and kick around some of the ideas we have, and then digest them over the next month and do it again. I don't know, I think that might be a good way for me to handle it anyhow, but that's up to each of the rest of the work.
You know, Charlie, I feel like we're a talented team, but we don't necessarily have a coach. And our coach is sitting over there, one of them, maybe Mary. I don't know, I mean, I feel like, you know, we could, you could pull out the dictionary and say, "How many words refer to light?", and then we could go crazy, so to speak. In other words, if we're, if we've already identified an area of interest, which is light trespass, is it possible you could guide us, like you did on the rooftop dining?
Sure, but, and I think when, when I listen to Mr. Falcone speak, putting 15 minutes at the end of the meeting only works if you are working within a structure. So, there has to be, we have to structure, what do we want to do? And then, you have to be presented with things before the meeting that you can review, and then you can provide your input. And, and I would think maybe a little bit more than 15 minutes, but I, I would recommend, and this is completely up to you, but, have one kickoff meeting, on a night where you're not hearing subdivision plans, and you're not doing anything else. Everybody comes with the mindset that we're going to tackle the lighting ordinance. And then, we can come together as a group, we can devise a structure and an outline for how we want to handle it, and then move forward by addressing it at the end of meetings that are short like this.
And being a pragmatist, look at our public audience here. And certainly, the only items on the agenda that would invite a lot of public comment were these two ordinances, and nobody's here. I think the September 3rd or 2nd meeting, whatever the day after Labor Day is, is another situation where you might not really have the participation that you want. If you recommend, as Steve did, that we have a separate meeting, I could see that, and, you know, you put a little hoopla into it, and they, you know, "It's only about these, this ordinance," and, you know, you get the public, and give them their chance to have a say, you get everybody out about Villanova again, but at least you'll have gone through the process the right way. But I do want, or would like personally, not to have a situation where, to go back to something we did, the planned institutional, we worked on that, and worked on that, we had special meetings on that, we had a consultant on that, and he would, as we proceeded with the process, would change the content, because from one meeting to the next, we began to add things. And the ultimate result is that the BOC rejected it, and went with a much smaller, tighter little ordinance to do the same thing, some of the same thing.
Now that you bring that up, Skip, I, this has caused me to rethink something. I think we've had a great discussion here. I think we could work through some things and improve the existing ordinance, as I've just suggested. But I also think that before we embark on this, because my sense is that we're thinking of plowing through the existing ordinance and trying to improve it, as opposed to writing a new ordinance, I think that our, that should be our recommendation from this, from this discussion that we've been having so far, and I think that recommendation should be taken up to the board of commissioners. If they reject it, and we go up to the basket and it gets rejected, then we're back to square one. It would seem kind of silly to go through this entire exercise for the next month, or two months, or three months, and then have the board of commissioners tell us, "Nah, that's not what we really want it."
Well, we're trying to guess what they're thinking.
Yeah, so, I, the direction wasn't, wasn't necessarily, "We want a brand-new, throw out the old ordinance, we want a brand-new ordinance," and the direction wasn't to tweak the existing ordinance. I think they're looking for your input. And if your input and your collective agreement, your collective thoughts say, "We have good bones here, we need to address some of them to get where we want to be," I think that's fine. I, my recommendation is, I don't think we need to ask the board if that's the proper way to move. My suggestion was, they're putting it in your hands, so to speak, and if that's the way you feel to move forward, that's the way you move, you move forward, and we will support you in any way, you know, provide the ordinance. I mean, I don't know if everybody, so by the next meeting, depending on whatever schedule you choose, we would make sure everybody has a copy of where lighting pops up in the ordinance, you could read that, and then, if you literally could look at sections at a time and say, "Hey, this meeting, we're gonna go through, you know, A, B, and C, don't really see any need to change anything, definitions look good, definitions don't look good," and then we move down to, and it seems like everybody's really interested in the photometrics, you know, the diagram we get, that shows how the light spreads over the site, that's, that's the spillover, or the lack thereof, and, so we can work our way down to that. But I would just suggest, if that's the way this committee, this commission wishes to move, I think that's a great way to go.
I also think it'd be helpful that in between meetings, instead of having a subcommittee that can't vote, and can't get away from public, nothing wrong with public meetings, of course, but they can get in the way of more efficient production of new ideas. I think that perhaps, and we have a lot of talent here, people who are in the business, that perhaps we can circulate amongst ourselves information, we can have information, I think this is okay, this is permissible, sample ordinances, sample selections from other ordinances, that give us some ideas, so that when we do come together, we've already had the opportunity to review important and relevant information that would help guide us to an understanding and a restructuring and improvement of the existing ordinance. And I think that would be critical. We can't come in here and start from square one every single day, or every single time we have a meeting. And I think that's something that we should, we should encourage.
I just have to beat back to the, my point, that the PI thing, we were given the task of revising it, we probably spent 15 hours on it, 20 hours, and, you know, they threw it out. So, I, one reason they threw it out was perhaps because, early in the process, they didn't, the BOC didn't come to us and say, "No, you don't have to touch that," or, "No, we're not really interested in that, and most of what's been done on that, you can stop." But there was no back and forth, there was no dialogue. So, we ended up spending all that time, and, you know, frankly, I was frustrated with that. I think the vestige of what we got out of that was that the parking requirements, you know, were recognized as an issue for medical office, and that's about it. So, I, I almost wish each commissioner would say, "These are the three things I don't think are in the current ordinance," and they can make their own list and give it to us. And other than saying, "Take a look at this, and what do you got?"
Yeah, we don't have to rewrite the whole ordinance, like, the whole ordinance, because we can, because we've talked about this with stormwater, can't we just pick a few areas, and just make a slight adjustment to those areas, so we don't have to rewrite the whole ordinance?
I think that's the general consensus. Remember, I said you have a few options, throw it out and redo it, do nothing, or go to specific sections, that section looks fine, and we move on. And I think the, you know, the big items are light spillover, which is somewhat addressed, it is addressed in the ordinance, equipment, things like that. So, if that's the way, you might move rather quickly, so if you go through, you know, you go through the definitions, and maybe that's where we look for some technical assistance because of the technology, you know, that you brought up. But there might be section after section which you feel need no changing, and then as you get to the more salient sections regarding what you can see, what can be seen, from where and when, maybe that's where you put your, your effort. I mean, I will gladly bring to the manager, you know, to get direction, I don't know, you know, when that would be, or you could move along. I, I think they gave it to you folks because they do have confidence in this group of professionals to come up with something in whatever format you wish.
I, I think they gave it to us because they don't have any interest in it, frankly, Steve. I think they, so, we're gonna, we'll take the ball and run with it, I presume, but here's what I'll say. You hear a lot about technology and dark skies, and these, the dark skies websites are basically, haven't been updated in five years or six years. In 2020, if the Trump administration doesn't stop it, all incandescent's out, so everything's LED. There's an expert on lights from Rensselaer Polytech on NPR this week, talking about how people don't understand why the lights are so bright. And the reason they're so bright is, they're replacing a lot of lights with LEDs. The LEDs need a lot less wattage for the same lumens, and people are getting that confused. And so, the public is seeing bright lights, and they don't understand why. So, I think this is all about, if we're gonna look at our, our code, our lighting code, all we need to do is look at what's gonna happen in the next five years or six years with technology, and we need some expert advice, because none of us here, at least I'm not, a lighting expert. And I'm only getting this stuff by doing research, and there's not a lot of information out there. So, like, what I heard on NPR was sort of amazing stuff about how human nature is affected by bright lights that are supposedly better, and they, and save money, but, you know, it's like, so it's like, there's, there's a lot of science involved, and I think it's doing this right. And so, any advice that the engineering family in Radnor can, can, can give us would be helpful, I think.
So, we brought in a lighting expert for Villanova University, back when the West End parking lot was installed. I guess it was to Mr. Nat's point, you know, about checking, and you literally had this guy. We all, we all were out there, it was nine o'clock at night, and he had his light meter, and we went around. So, that was a gentleman from FXB Engineering, and the manager also authorized him, he did the review on the stadium lighting. I would talk to the manager, but I'm, I'm gonna hazard a guess that we could involve this person in some fashion, I don't, it's not an open pocketbook, but, you know, maybe he comes in for a presentation, or maybe there's a list of questions. Your thoughts on wattage is good, but that's why, so that's why we don't deal in wattages, we deal in the lumens, the foot candles, what hits the ground. But the light is very different in an LED light. It is, it is a different color, and, so, my suggestion is, if this works for the group, we will, we will provide for the planning commission, I'll say sometime next week, the lighting ordinance as it stands throughout all the different parts and pieces. You folks take a look at it, let us know how you want to proceed, let us know, again, my suggestion is, you should read it a little bit before we bring an expert in, so you have some questions up front that you want to bring him in for, him or her. That's my thought. We'll get you the ordinance in a couple weeks, and at this commission's pace, you tell us when you want to have it on the agenda, you just, the chair would email Trish, say, "Put this on for the agenda." Have your discussion, let me know when you want to bring the expert in, I'd get approval for that, and we could go from there.
Steve, I just want to ask you a quick question. Just going back to, you know, what's motivating this in the first place, because the last time that this was brought to us, it wasn't motivated, you know, by the sense of the entire, you know, lighting ordinance should be consolidated and updated, it was because people were upset about some stadium lighting. And you said that there are already provisions on the books that would prevent light trespass? Is it an issue of enforcement? Is there, is this something specific that should be addressed, rather than, you know, dressing it up, that it's really about updating a lighting ordinance?
So, I, I can't speak to the impetus for this, and I know there's been various theories, I, I can't speak to them whatsoever. So, our current ordinance, if you, if you see when the land development comes in on the commercial properties, it shows the property line, and there's only, and I can't remember, I can't recall if it's, you know, zero spillage, or .5-foot candles, or whatever it may be. So, we have that, and when the lighting engineer submits that, and signs and seals that drawing, just like any other professional, attorney, engineer, architect, he saw, he or she signs and seals that drawing and says, "This is exactly what I'm telling you is going to happen." Now, maybe, maybe one of the changes in the ordinance is, post-development, the requirement is that somebody comes out and tests the perimeter of said property. That's something this commission could add, that may have value, it's done during the process, it's on the plans, it's part of the It's done during the process, it's on the plans, it's part of the escrow. You've got to bring a lighting engineer out to test this at some point, and verify that the zero, or the one-foot candle spillover is what occurs at the property line. And if it doesn't, they have to fix it. So there, there are things that, you know, I think there's a lot of value the commission could add, and it seems like that's one of the biggest issues. And again, I go back, and I, I would love to see your input on, there's some language that's a little bit tough to, when we talk about the fixture, and seeing the fixture, and the glare from the fixture, so we got into big brouhahas over, what was the glare? Was it the glare coming off the, the pole? I mean, it, it got deep, and maybe, maybe it doesn't need to be that deep, right? Maybe it's something that works from an engineering standpoint, and everybody can understand. And I, I think that would be great stuff from you folks up there on the board.
Don't we have that breakdown?
Matt did it in the beginning, he pulled a lot of sections out.
So we would give you, so what Mr. Golis did is great. My thought would be, we'll give you, if it's not in there, we'll give you the ordinance, we'll give you all this, everybody digest it, and the chair can tell Trish when he wants to have this on. You folks choose what you want to go over, when you want to go over it, when you want to bring someone in, and, and we work at that. Because I don't know what the land development pace will be until the end of the year. Roll the dice and say, "Our dross," and we'll be back. No, I don't know. That's my suggestion.
There's, and there's no prohibition from us exchanging information amongst ourselves through the internet, or some, in some fashion, without...
Yes, I would say there is. If you're going to provide comment to the staff, that's one thing. I would ask that you not hit reply all when you do that, because what's prohibited under the Sunshine Act is deliberation, leading to a decision. And the communication, look, I didn't like that, is, if a majority of you is involved, and there's discussion about provisions of an ordinance that you're eventually going to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, there could be a problem with the Sunshine Act. So I don't think we should do a whole lot over the internet.
As, as another way of looking at this, either staff, or some of our consultants that we use, if they could identify another community that went through this, find another community that's, that, you know, at least someone believes they did it right, they looked at it recently, which somehow we get hold of their ordinances, with what they're thinking, may, or possibly may not work here, but at least it may be another perspective.
You have, you have several, I mean, Mr. Golis gave us Lower Marion and a few, and the Solicitor did. We can get as many as you wish. I think it's very subjective, as to who did it right, and what works, but, I mean, you have them to read, to cherry, to cherry pick from, or to look at. So we'll, we'll get you whatever. Staff is here to assist this commission any way you need, in, in working towards this. So if you would like more than what's in here, we'll get you more than what's in here.
Well, either, either, say, within around here, either with outside of, within the Philadelphia metropolitan area, or elsewhere, elsewhere in the country, that someone's been really thinking about this. So I'm just wondering if, like, some of the architects that we know, or some of the engineers that we know, have a perspective on a nationwide basis, they could pull upon whatever community...
I think some depends on what you're looking at. So we are an urbanized suburb, versus a truly urban area, versus a rural area. I think, I mean, there's all, I think there's similarity in lighting ordinances, but I think it has to fit for where you are. You know, we're not Northern Pennsylvania, we're not Philadelphia, we are, we are urbanized as a suburb, but, you know, I, I think you should, and we'll get you some examples. I don't know that a big city ordinance fits us, not to sound like a hillbilly, but a big city.
You know, Upper Marion probably doesn't fit us as well as Lower Marion.
I would concur.
The most progressive one I've seen is Cambridge, Massachusetts, which spent tons of time trying to do it right, and it's pretty recent. I have a call in, this, this Rensselaer Polytech professor, so I could ask him if he knows five communities that, and try to describe Radnor to him.
Before you go, we have Cambridge.
Yeah, we can, we could.
Okay, I think we have some idea of where we're going, sort of. Is there any old business? I think we just got done with some old business, sort of. And, uh, any new business? Do we have a motion that we adjourn?
Second.